I call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
(inaudible) My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the January 8, 2019 meeting. And I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter. And if you need a listening device, Craig can help you with that. He's on the front up here. We are going to start with a swearing in of the newly elected county commissioners, and we will do one at a time. We have Judge Pakus here to do the swearing in. And Jeff, we are going to start with you.
We're starting with me?
We're starting with you.
(inaudible)
So when he's done, he can come up inside, or you can...
All right, great.
Yeah, you probably should switch it around. Stand a little closer to the microphone.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've done it before.
Norwegian.
Nice Bible.
Gave to my grandmother in 1910.
I was gonna say, hi, how are you John?
How are you? Nice to see you.
Yeah, good to see you again.
All right.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeff Barth...
I, Jeff Barth.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(laughing)
Yeah, absolutely. Can I get you to sign right here, Jeff?
Under circuit, Judge.
I'll do that one.
Right here, right?
Yep. Thanks for asking. I appreciate it.
All right, ready to come forward, Gerald?
I am.
All right. Want me to hold it?
My wife's on injured reserves.
All right, put your hand up. All right, repeat after me. I, Gerald Benega...
I, Gerald Benega.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll have Sheriff Milstead next.
All right, ready to go, Sheriff?
I guess. Done a couple times before.
All right, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Milstead...
I, Mike Milstead.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And we'll have Sheriff Milstead next.
All right, ready to go, Sheriff?
I guess. Done a couple times before.
All right, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Milstead...
I, Mike Milstead.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Sheriff.
Of Minnehaha County Sheriff.
Congrats, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good to see you, brother.
Julie, you're next.
Good to see you again.
You too.
All right, can I have you raise your right hand? Please repeat after me. I, Julie Risti...
I, Julie Risti.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Register of Deeds.
Of Minnehaha County Register of Deeds.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(laughing)
Of course.
What?
He's in March.
I'm not on the list. He's not till April.
State statute goes in March, yeah?
Not till April or April.
April, yep, that's right. It's one of those quirky things. All right, please repeat after me. I, Cindy Hyburger...
I, Cindy Hyburger.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of my said office...
Of my said office.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Judge Pakus, thank you so much for coming and swearing in, all of our people. We're glad to have the crew back.
Absolutely, it's a pleasure. Yeah, exactly. It's good to see everybody and thank you for having me.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a special recognition of Joe, Colonel Joe Einig. I think he's standing there somewhere. Can you come up, Joe? So Joe works for JDC, and he has also been serving with the South Dakota Air National Guard for 34 years.
Army National Guard.
Oh, excuse me, Army National Guard. It's right here in front of me. And on December 31, 2018, Colonel Einig was retired from military duty, but he will continue to work at JDC for Minnehaha County. So I'm going to give a few of your highlights. You were in National Upkeep Mission to Panama in 1992. He had four training deployments for war fighter exercises in Germany. He was involved in Operation Iraqi Freedom in 2004. He served as a task force commander during the Missouri River flood in 2011. And he served, he serves, served as a command, a company battalion and brigade commander. And he's also, so his distinguished military career prompted Governor Dugard to declare December 31, 2018 as Colonel Joseph Einig Day. And so we congratulate you on that. And also, he has been honored by a signed letter from President Donald Trump thanking him for his service. And so today, we just wanted to take the opportunity of the commission to publicly thank you for your service, not only to JDC, but your public service to our nation and protecting us. So thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Cindy.
With that, we will move on to our special business, which is, we opened our meeting with a motion to consider the current agenda, to approve the agenda.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, I would take nominations for the chairperson for the 2019 year.
I would make a motion to elect Gene Bender as the chairperson for 2019.
I have a motion and a second to nominate Gene Bender as the chairman for 2019. I would take roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that vote of confidence. And I also just, I just want to take a moment just to say what a great morning this is. You know, we don't have such an opportunity to celebrate like we have this morning. And we do a lot of hard things here all year long, but I just want to congratulate all the people and thank all the people that were sworn in today. Running for office is not for the faint of heart. And I just really appreciate all the years of service that we get to be surrounded by here in the commission and the people that we get to work with every day of the year. So I just thank everybody for their willingness to serve in the military and their willingness to serve the county. So, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to select a commission vice chairman for 2019. Nominate Commissioner Karski.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote? Sorry. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that vote of confidence. And I also just, I just want to take a moment just to say what a great morning this is. You know, we don't have such an opportunity to celebrate like we have this morning. And we do a lot of hard things here all year long, but I just want to congratulate all the people and thank all the people that were sworn in today. Running for office is not for the faint of heart. And I just really appreciate all the years of service that we get to be surrounded by here in the commission and the people that we get to work with every day of the year. So I just thank everybody for their willingness to serve in the military and their willingness to serve the county. So, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to select a commission vice chairman for 2019. Nominate Commissioner Karski.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote? Sorry. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is the designation of official county newspapers. Craig?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. South Dakota codified law requires at the first meeting of every year of the county commission that three official newspapers of record be designated. Bids were submitted from various newspapers, and this year is, we have one more than last. There's a new qualifier to be illegal newspapers. So in the memo here, you see the different pricing for the newspapers regarding publishing meeting minutes as well as other public notices and their circulation. As you will note, publishing the minutes and other publications is a significant expense to the county when you consider what the commission has to publish as far as meeting minutes and notices, as well as other departments. As an example, planning and zoning, as well as the highway department. And additionally, the state's attorney has some publications that need to be published. There are some representatives from each of the newspapers here. If you would so desire to ask them any questions about their bids, I would stand by for any questions as you would select three legal newspapers.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Benega? Are there any motions? Commissioner Hyburger?
I just wondered if we should hear from each one of the representatives that are here, just a quick point.
Okay, that'd be fine. Is there a representative from the Dell Rapids Tribune that would like to speak this morning? Go ahead. Okay, no one from the Tribune. Brandon Valley Challenger? Brandon Valley Journal?
Jill. Well, good morning. My name is Jill Meyer. I'm the publisher and general manager of the Brandon Valley Journal. We started publishing in August of 2017. We are a community, locally focused newspaper. My newspaper was created with, from shareholders, from local people that wanted a local news source. And I think we've been doing a pretty good job of covering everything from city to county. As you know, we have Dave in the seats here every week. We are sharing his expense with two other locally owned newspapers, the Garretson Gazette and the Minnehaha County Messenger, as well as the Dell Rapids Journal, but that is not a legal newspaper now. We feel it's important to have these legal notices. As you know, starting a new business is not easy, and so we, we need to get our feet on the ground before we can really run. And when we're running, you're going to see more staff and more coverage of things, not only just locally in Brandon Valley Springs and the Brandon Valley School District, which is our coverage area, but as well as the county, too. I guess I would hope you would give the, the new paper a chance. Give us a year, see how we do. Looking at those figures on the deal, I do, I would challenge the Challenger and the Dell Rapids Tribune's subscription numbers. I don't believe they are anywhere in that 4,000 bracket. I happen to work at one of the former newspapers, so I knew what those subscription numbers were, and they were never at, at that number. So I would encourage you maybe to investigate that a little bit or ask some questions. That could be their shopper number. And as we know, legals can't go into a shopper. That's state law. Any questions for me?
Madam Chair, I would just comment that your newspaper has a lot of content, and I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. Again, it's, you know, news, features, sports. We're, we're trying to be as much as we possibly can. And with the staff, myself and a reporter, you know, we spend a lot of hours out there. And I do have a staff of five people, including myself. So it is important to obviously give those people, I guess, salary and benefits that they deserve, too. And this is one way that we're able to do that, as well as educate the public. As you know, these notices will be printed in the paper, but they are also available on our website, free of charge, this SDNA website, free of charge. And of course, people would have the access to them from your website as well. So I think we hit a lot of avenues in, in getting your meeting minutes out there. So, thanks for considering us.
Thank you. Garrettson Gazette?
Good morning, Commissioners. My rates, my proposal is the same as we had last year. Nothing's changed. Honestly, the three of us, the Minnehaha Messenger, the Garretson Gazette, and the Brandon Journal, we teamed up this summer. You see Dave there taking pictures. It was actually Commissioner Barth who made the introductions to us. And he's, he was a retired newspaper editor, and he works currently at the state penitentiary in the education section. But he thought this would be a great part-time gig for him to cover the county commissioners for us. And we were happy to make that connection. The three of us are invested in the county. We are the rural area of the county. We are not Sioux Falls, but we do like Sioux Falls. We do a lot of business back and forth. And honestly, if you look at the rates up there, math doesn't lie. Some of the other dailies, we might, you might make the argument, I've, I've looked at the numbers, me and Matt publishing both, they can charge time and a half what we do from the current rate. I'm like Jill questioning that, what their numbers really are, and if they're accurate. But I can't speak to that, I suppose. So I guess to me, if you want to spend South Dakota taxpayer money with South Dakotans in the state, that's what you should choose. And thank you.
Thank you. Minnehaha Messenger?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Anderson with Anderson Publications. The Minnehaha Messenger is one of the papers we have. Recently, we took it from a Hartford and Humboldt paper and made it into one, making it the Minnehaha Messenger. Part of that point was to reach out to other communities. So it's not only Humboldt and Hartford, but we've tried to add Colton and Crooks. And it's slow, but sure, the numbers from those communities have risen into our subscription rates. And the amount of news and stuff that we cover out of those has increased. We also, in July, started a new newspaper in Dell Rapids, the Dell City Journal. I can't remember exactly the numbers I gave you a few weeks ago when I put in the proposal. I believe it was 362 or something. Right now, we're at 399, which isn't too bad for six months in. So between Dell Rapids, Hartford, Humboldt, Colton, and Crooks, we feel it's a larger coverage area to help promote those communities with the news and the city, county, and commissioner legals. So I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Anyone have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would propose that we hire the, the three rural newspapers, plus the Argus Leader. I recognize that that's an additional cost to us, but I would say that if we want to reach all of our citizens, this is probably the best way. And, you know, it's, if we didn't have newspapers, we would have to invent them, because it's difficult enough to communicate with citizens as it is. I don't know how often, especially in planning and zoning, we have a meeting where people said, "Well, no one ever told me about it." Well, it's, it's printed in our agenda. It's printed in, you know, our, our minutes. We have it on the internet. We send postcards out. We put signs on the property. And still people claim that no one ever told them. Of course, then you have to wonder how they came to the meeting. But it's, it's, it's our best effort to try to give our citizens our information. And I guess I would make a motion to approve the three rural newspapers, plus I think by law, we have to do the biggest newspaper. So, and the Argus Leader.
Commissioner Barth, I would just ask you to clarify what you'd consider rural, because they have, because of the names.
I'm not hearing you very well when you're sitting over there, not being chairperson. Maybe, maybe Gene was always mumbling over there, but...
You know what, before we, I neglected to ask if there was somebody from the Argus here. I didn't see anybody from the Argus here. Is there anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the Argus?
Their reporter is here, but...
I suppose my favorite.
All right.
So Cindy, would you?
Commissioner Barth, I just asked if you would clarify which newspapers you were talking about.
Yes. I would like to do the Minnehaha Messenger, the Garretson Gazette, the Brandon Valley Journal, and the Argus Leader.
So motion? Is there a second?
I will second that for conversation.
Did you have a comment that you'd like to make?
Not yet. I'm trying to add the numbers in my head.
Commissioner Karski?
And I'm working on the numbers, too. I don't think we have anything directly tied to them, but...
Takes three votes. That's all it takes.
Yeah. (laughing) We'll add it up when we're, after we vote, okay? You know, as somebody who's read the newspaper daily since my mom put it in front of me when I was about six years old and showed me the funnies page, I've been used to reading the newspaper for a long time. I have not received in the last two years a newspaper. I get it online every day. And I read the, religiously still read the newspaper every day. I'm just curious, how many of, or are any of the other than the Argus Leader available online for reading?
(inaudible).
Okay.
Subscription based. You get a PDF.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's a state website, too, SDNA, has a legal website that has all the rules for all papers.
Madam Chair, we need people to come to them.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think I, I'm going to need you guys to go to the microphone to answer the question. Thank you.
Both Jill and I are available online. Mine is a subscription base. I believe hers is as well. Basically, for me, you get a PDF of the paper that you can read on any mobile device, which is handy. And the point Dave was making is that all legal notices that you publish are available on sdpublicnotices.com. It's part of the South Dakota Newspaper Association. They do it all the time. And it's been active for, I don't know how many years. A long time. At least 10. And so every legal notice that you publish with us is also published for free at no cost to you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, point of clarification, I don't believe Garrett identified himself by name the first time he was up there.
Thank you.
Garrett Moritz, owner of the Garretson Gazette. Sorry.
You need an address. Thank you, Garrett.
We aren't currently online...
Identify yourself as well, just so I don't get trouble here.
Matt Anderson.
Thank you, Matt.
The Messenger, Minnehaha Messenger. We're in the process of figuring out our bugs so we can launch online as well. So hopefully, very shortly.
Yes, we have a website, brandenvallajournal.com. The legals, whether you subscribe or not, you have free access to, to read the legals. Our paper is also printed online by Perstory, or you can see it in its page form content in the e-dition. So...
Can you just identify yourself as well?
Oh, Jill Meyer. Excuse me.
Thank you, Jill. So have our math wizards done their math yet? Commissioner Hyburger?
That's my, that's my comment. Craig, do you have a number? Does someone have a number as to what the difference in the cost would be by adding another newspaper?
Craig Dewey, Commission Office. After visiting with Carol Muller as well, we estimated that would be around or approximately $15,000 of additional expense.
Chair, I can certainly carry the conversation forward if we need a pause from silence. Clearly, it's in our interest to help the business in Minnehaha County. And our largest newspaper, while it does have employees and stuff in this county, they're a multinational type corporation, and the profits are, if any, are taken out of our community. You can bet that anything that's invested in the Garretson Gazette will be invested in, in a region within five miles of Garretson, and maybe in Madison or something for printing. But it's, these are our local businesses. And I don't think we should leave them behind as we go forward on declaring official newspapers.
Other comments? Commissioner Hyburger?
This is always one of the hardest ones, decisions we have on our first meeting. It's harder than picking a chairman. But, because I've just, I mean, $15,000, it's still $15,000. And, and I know last year when we made this decision, we based it, we tried to base it on, we were going to have someone from the west side and from the east side in the city. And so, and we did good. Now Jill, you've added a newspaper. So it just makes it more difficult. I don't have a solution. I guess I'm looking to my counterparts as to what their thoughts are, because I'm really not sure. I agree with what Jeff says, but yet it's still $15,000, and we're only required to have three papers. And so that just makes my decision more difficult.
If I...
Commissioner Karski?
You know, when I campaign and I look at my strategy for running an election, I look at the people who get the newspaper, especially in the rural areas, because they're the ones that, are the informed voters in my mind. They're the ones that are really paying attention to what we do and what's going on. So I would be supportive of adding the extra. And just because the people that are getting it, I believe, are the ones that really care and are concerned. And the more we can get our message to them, I think that just makes a lot of sense.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, if we're going to change the way we give information, I'd like to sit over there so I don't have to sit with Jeff for another four minutes.
(laughing)
We've had this discussion privately, but we're, we're getting along fine.
Very friendly.
We are. I think it's about coverage, and duplication of coverage would be expensive, but I do agree with Jeff that we need to support the rural communities, and I think we have to support the local media. So I'm going to support it this time as a, I guess, a test run to see if in fact we are effective with that or not. So we can get along, right?
Yeah.
Right. And if I may, I've said to a previous newspaper editor, if I punched Gerald in the nose and there was no reporter here to cover that, did it happen?
(laughing)
Newspaper editor said, yes, Gerald would tell me.
Any further comments? All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming this morning. Okay, that takes us to establish the record for non-elected department heads for 2019. Craig, did you have anything you wanted to say about that? Okay, I just need to read the names apparently, which means I have to get to that. Please. Craig, did you have anything you wanted to say about that? Okay, I just need to read the names apparently, which means I have to get to that place on my computer. Here we go. So the non-elected, 2019, non-elected department heads, Carol Muller for the Commission Office, Monte Wantabac for the Information Technology, DJ Boothy, Highway, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Court Center, Mark Crinns, Facilities, Bill Hoskins, Museum, Carrie Jo Dever, Human Resources, Scott Anderson, Planning and Zoning, Parks, Julie Hofer, Public Advocate, Tracy Smith, Public Defender, Carrie Benz, Human Services, and Chris Leela, Equalization. And then we also have some positions of public interest that aren't actually department heads. We are waiting for a new hire for Metro Communications. Jason Gierman is the Sheriff's Office Division of Emergency Management. Ralph Hammer is Weed and Pest. David Sorensen is Veteran Service Officer, and Charles Martineau is 4-H Advisor. I would look for a motion to approve...
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to all of those, for, those people for all their hard work. The next item is to appoint the Minnehaha County Coroner. And Craig Dewey?
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. I am not volunteering to be the coroner. We have an excellent coroner for a number of years, in Dr. Kenneth Snell. And a contract was negotiated last year with Dr. Snell for services as a coroner. He also coincidentally serves as the medical examiner for the county, and has engaged in a number of ways to try and save costs for the county, and runs a really tight ship. So given that that contract is already signed, I would submit Dr. Kenneth Snell's name to you.
Make a motion to nominate Dr. Kenneth Snell to this county coroner appointment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thank you. So the next item is to determine the 2019 Commissioner's salary, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office, yes. South Dakota Codified Law 775 requires the Board of County Commissioners to establish their salary at the first regular meeting of each year. So, when you went through the budget process, you had conversations, and I recognize that this is one of your most difficult conversations that you all have to have during the year. Your salary for 2018 was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents, with an additional thousand dollars for the chairperson in recognition of this role's extra assignments. The commission budget for 2019 was approved on September 25th with approximately a 1% salary increase for commissioners and an added 1,000 for the chairperson. This is divided into 26 pay periods, which is why you end up with this odd cents amount that we end up doing because of our system. In order to accommodate a number that's divisible for the payroll system, we would recommend adoption of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty, one hundred dollars and eighty cents for commissioners and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the chair.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That is a hard vote. We did most of the bloodletting, I think, during the budget cycle, so we're... Okay, that takes us to routine business. First item, it'd be to approve the county commission minutes for December 27th, 2018.
Move approval of the minutes from the 27th.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of one million sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. Paid bills?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Commissioner Barth?
I thought we have three hundred and forty thousand in highway bills on this bill, on this week.
Yep, highway construction continues. So, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. So we have, there's a couple of reports there for everyone's review, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office report for December 2018, and the Minnehaha Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for November 2018. Next item is personnel, Carrie Jo Dever.
Sorry, I'm in a transition, it's production day.
We're very thankful you all came, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The first item I have for your consideration is the routine actions.
Motion to approve routine action?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
What I have is to recognize the January 2019 Significant Employee Anniversaries. Have a bit of a longer list. Celebrating five years of service, we have Michael Larson at the jail, Lindy Camrath and Austin Boss at Public Advocates Office, Leah Bough at the Sheriff's Office, and Robert Harrison at the State's Attorney's Office, and Ellen Bozel at the Treasurer's Office. Celebrating 15 years of service, we have Maria Gonzalez and Patricia Hughes at the jail, Ryan Mickelson at JDC, Michelle Thomas and Mark Cady at the Public Advocates Office, Janet Eden at the State's Attorney's Office, and Kelly Nyhop at the Treasurer's Office. I'm really happy to let you know that we have several of these people in attendance. We have everybody from the Public Advocates Office, and I think we have Ellen and Kelly from Treasurer's Office. Am I missing anybody? Anyone wanna say a few words now that you waited so patiently to? No one? I can't believe that.
Well, we want to thank all of you and those that weren't able to be here for your service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item I have for you is to record the county volunteers for December 2018. I'm always surprised to stand in front of you and give you a list of 250 to 300 people who are helping us out, and the December count was 264. So our gratitude and thanks go to that group of individuals as well.
Absolutely, it's always a very impressive list.
The fourth item I have is a special commission action request to authorize a new classification of a pretrial coordinator team lead, and that would be a pay grade 13. And then if you're supportive of that, to approve immediate internal recruitment. Aaron was present a few weeks ago to talk to you a little bit about pretrial services and a new grant that was available, and some shared costs through both the grant, and then sharing a quarter with Lincoln County and a quarter funded by Minnehaha County. Aaron is here, if you have any questions, but today we're asking for authorization to add that, and to add it at sort of a level where they're providing work direction and supervision for the other two staff members.
Is there any questions for Carrie or Aaron?
I guess just a technical question, did Lincoln County approve the request?
They did.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you so much.
Thanks. If I could just take one moment, Chris Leela, who is your new Director of Equalization, is here today. I thought I would just give him a chance to introduce himself, if that was all right.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, and welcome, thank you, Chris.
Good morning, Chris Leela, your new Director of Equalization. I just want to extend my thank you for the job offer, day two, my head is still swimming. Hopefully I can be a great asset, I've got a lot to learn with their processes and how they're, how they're doing things within the office, some redundant systems, some redundant entry, but talking with a few and knowing what I know, give me some time. Can't guarantee any deadline dates as of yet, we've gotta get through April through our county boards and in March with our local boards, but when we get done with that, I'm gonna try and hit the ground running hard, and hopefully, talking with Monte, and my goal would be to possibly by the end of this year, to have the AS400 system for our office's purposes done. But we've got some steps to take, some processes to figure out, but that's my goal right now, and if we can do that, then the next step would be to bring ENCODE fully onboard. With that, that's where my expertise lies, is with the ProVal and the ENCODE software, so hopefully I'm a great service to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to come down here and work. So, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item 13, it's the application for abatement. I have struggled with pronouncing correctly the name of this church, and I don't have any confidence that I can do it correctly, but it's the Eritrean Orthodox Toehedo Church. Is there someone here to talk, that's gonna present on this?
You can just read it.
Oh, okay, Olivia, just gonna...
So, as you said, it's for the Etrian Orthodox Toehedo Church, I apologize if I said that wrong, RDID 53446, for 2017 property taxes in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, and this is for tax-exempt status.
Motion to approve?
Motion, is there...
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call vote?
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously, thank you very much. So the next item, item 14, is notices, it's an authorization, authorization for the auditor to publish a notice of hearing for an application to transfer a retail on-sale liquor license. Olivia?
Yes, we received an application from Red Rock Bar to transfer the license from R&amp;K Land Holdings to Red Rock Bar and Grill, Inc. So the hearing has been scheduled for January 29th.
Any questions?
We need a mo...
Go ahead.
We need a motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing for this application of transfer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item are planning and zoning notices, and there are none. So it takes us to item 16, a petition for compromise of lien. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to release a county aid lien with no dollars, and I will explain why that request has come through. This is in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, which essentially has been misapplied to somebody else. It was inadvertently put on somebody else's file that happens to be a juvenile, we need to get that removed, and because other people came forward with that same name, it was happening to be his ex-spouse, and has the same name, and he's looking to refinance his house, and this lien, which was inadvertently put on there, is attached. So before you today is the request that lien DPNO 94797 filed in error be released in full with no payment, and that the public defender fees in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars for file receipt 727015 for KC, the initials, dated 20171115 be correctly applied to the parents named in the juvenile case under lien DPNO 90490. All right.
Is there any questions for Carol?
I'll make a motion to do what she said.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, oh, we need a roll call, sorry.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Good morning. Could you just introduce yourself and give your name and address?
Thank you, good morning, Commissioner, my name is Jesse Funkert, City of Hartford, Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Director. Just here today to send my greetings from your colleagues in Hartford, and to send our thanks for the improvements that are being done in the Brower Edition, they've been working on some of the drainage issues, I believe, for the last several months, and we look forward to that progress continuing in the future. We also look forward to bringing more business to town and helping the counties coffers fill as well. So, any questions for me?
Questions for Jesse?
Looking forward to great improvements out there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else? All right, that takes us to regular business. The first item in our agenda is a briefing on the Family Visitation Center. Good morning. Just introduce yourself and give your address.
Good morning. My name is Luke Comall, I'm the Executive Director of the Family Visitation Center. Thank you Commissioners for this opportunity. Family Visitation Center exists as a place that we ensure that children will stay physically and emotionally safe while they visit their, those that they call family in our building. We currently receive funding from, from you guys, and we're greatly appreciative of that, and I want to tell you a little bit today about what that does for the families in our area. Currently, we're serving roughly around 120, 125 families per week that utilize our services. Our demographics kinda split pretty even, pretty match up pretty much every month, around 60/40, so 60% of the families that we serve come to us from Child Protection Services, and the other 40% come to us from Family Law Court situations, with dissolution of a marriage/relationship involving children. So the funds that you help support is those 40% of what we do for families that need to utilize our services, in which there's not funding to fully pay for the services that it would take to run the facility. So looking at who we are and what we do, our annual budget is roughly around $800,000, and our billable service is around $550,000. So our development goal each year is usually around $250,000 or more each year, and the funds that you help provide for Family Visitation Center helps offset that, so it's a huge blessing to us, so thank you for that. That 40, 40% of the families that we serve that come to us from the Family Law Courts, currently right now is between 60 and 65 families that we're serving that utilizes those funds that you guys help us with. And the issues that we have seen in the last few years that have risen is methamphetamine use, mental health, alcoholism, and things like that are predominant reasons on why families come to utilize our services. Some of the great qualities and things that we're proud of is that we're able to serve families in a safe environment and keep children safe to the best of our ability. We do that, our building is a locked building, and so in order to utilize our services, you have to be vetted in. We take security very seriously in who we are and what we do, making sure that everybody stays safe. Community partnerships is a huge goal of ours, and we've seen great strides in this, and it starts with you guys and what you guys have done and provided in funding for us, in that we're able to utilize that. People ask a lot, or what's the county providing, and we're able to say that it kinda helps support this mission in the community. People like Sanford, Avera, Larson Doors and Brookings, Sammons Financial, large donors have stepped up to help meet that goal each year. So I thank you so much for that and being part of that mission. And lastly, I want to tell you, in the last year, something that has been birthed in a large cooperative fashion was as our city has grown and the complexity has grown with families, obviously we run into situations where we get to capacity, where we're running at, we're serving as many families as we can, and continue to have families walk in that need our services. And so when working with our local circuit judges, Judge Pecos and Judge Long, we sat down and had many meetings, and how are we going to meet this need in our community when judges are referring families to us, and we're at capacity, and people need to use us for long, longer durations of time? And we came up in a cooperative effort in regards with a tiered system. So as families come to us from the Family Law Court system, they're with us for six months, and then after that six months, we write an objective report that during that time, these are the safety infractions that we saw, or there was no safety concerns during those six months. Information the courts can use, so those families can move on from our services in a respectful time, if as the path that the courts have decided for them to take. And so we've had that in place roughly a year now, and we've seen tremendous movement in regards to families that have come to utilize our services and then have moved away, and moved on to things outside of our services, or don't need services like ours at all anymore. So in years past, we had families that used us for a long time. We have steps in place now, so families have a progression system, they see the proverbial light at the end of the tunnel, so they can say, hey, we need to use this for such and such time, but because of the things that we put in place with our local courts and how we operate, we can help people move to a different place in their life, to a better place. So thank you for your guys' support in that and being a part of that process. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Commissioner Benega?
Luke, couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the work you guys do, that's a program that obviously is an alternative to some of the more restrictive kinds of things that we operate with. First of all, the 15 families that you mentioned in your notes that are on the waiting list, what happens to them, and how long do they wait before they're into the program? And then my second question, if you will, what's your, do you have a recidivism kind of number that we could look at to see how successful your program is? Do you see families coming back on a regular basis or not?
Sure. So on the first part, so the families that are on our waiting list, generally speaking, nights are our hot topic ones because of children who are in school and things like that. So many of those families, they're trying to dice between football practice and basketball practice, and they're trying to pick a night that's pretty popular for us. And so those families, when they are on a waitlist, generally within about a month or so, we're able to get them in as families are moving away, which goes back to that tiered system. We kinda, we came to a point where like, if a family never leaves, we're never gonna have that opening, and so we can actually assure families, all right, you know, we can't get you in this week, but we have a date or so out there that we can get you in, so it at least gives people hope that we will to serve you. In regards to recidivism, going to that 60/40, 60% of Child Protection Services and 40% of that private pay family, the recidivism on the 40% would be very low. I don't have that specific statistic for you, it would be much higher on the Child Protection Services side, but for the most part, most families use our services for a duration... duration on the private pay side, those that come to us from Family Law Court, and able to use our services and hopefully get to a place where that party doesn't have to be supervised anymore, and then they move away. And generally speaking, we don't see them again, so.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
It's a very valuable service that a lot of people aren't aware of, but it really helps keeps families, and it works for the best interest of the kids, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 18, which is a motion, which I'll consider a motion to reappoint David Sorenson as the Minnehaha County Veterans Service Officer for the term of four years. Jamie Phelps?
Good morning. Jamie Phelps with Human Services. The County Vet Service Officer position falls under the Human Services Department here, and our recommendation is to reappoint David Sorenson. He has been our, he's been with us now for a couple of years, and this will be for a four-year term as VSO, and he's provided excellent customer service and service to our veterans in the community, in the county, and even at times, veterans that come from outside the, outside of the county that he's dealt with. And he's done extensive outreach to different groups and to all the nursing homes in our community, as well as rural areas, up in Dell Rapids, Girton, and so on, and we recommend approval to reappoint him for the next four-year term. Do you have anything you'd like to mention, Dave, or do you have any questions for Dave?
Anyone have any questions for Jamie or for Dave?
I would make a motion to reappoint Mr. Sorenson.
Second.
Motion and a second, we have a roll call vote.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Congratulations. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 19, which is to consider a bid award recommendation and authorize the Chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and First Rate Excavate, Inc. DJ Boothy.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothy, Highway Superintendent. The Highway Department held a bid opening on December 19th for a culvert replacement project. The culvert replacement project replaces 10 of our worst culverts in the county. Sizes range from 24-inch to very large double-barrel box culverts. And so, the, at the bid opening, we received five bids. They were grouped pretty well altogether, all of them just a little bit less than our engineer's estimate. The low bid was First Rate Excavating, $1,078,000, or, I'm sorry, $1,078,000. So asking for you to approve the award of this bid and signing the contract today, and I'll stand by for questions.
Commissioner Hyburger?
This is only 10 culverts, and it's a lot of money. Can you kind of give me a range as to what the cheapest one is and what the most expensive, because the average amount is $100,000 a piece, and obviously, we know that's not what it is, so.
Sure.
What's your kind of-
The smallest one is a 24-inch culvert, so that one obviously isn't going to cost $100,000. The sizes range from 24-inch at the smallest, sorry, the font is pretty small, so I'm going to have to look at a different page here.
I probably could have pulled it up and given you the answer.
That's all right. So we've got a 24-inch, a 36-inch, a 48-inch, a 60-inch, and an 84-inch, and then, those are all fairly inexpensive culverts. The large ones are 12-by-6 precast concrete box culvert, two-barrel, eight-by-eight-foot precast box culvert, so that's eight-by-eight and an eight-by-eight all-in-one pipe section. So those are very expensive.
I was just looking for you to ballpark it, is, you know, maybe one culvert might be $1,000 and one might be $250,000. I was, that's what I was just looking for, DJ.
And the last one is, the last very large one is a 12-by-eight-foot box culvert. So the very large box culvert, say, can be a couple thousand per linear foot to purchase them and install them. So that's how the price gets averaged out to be $100,000 per culvert. An interesting fact with this project, I mean, it's a really large project for us, just the asphalt prices alone to pave back the asphalt after we're installing these culverts is over $100,000 worth of asphalt. So, part of that is because asphalt prices are really expensive right now, I think we're paying over $100 a ton for asphalt for this project. It's patching work, so that is going to be a little bit more expensive, but we're used to paying 40, $50 a ton for asphalt.
One more question, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Karski, did you have something?
Oh, yeah. The contractor's estimate, as you said DJ, was over $1,350,000, so I just want to congratulate you, I mean, how you manage the department, how you, you know, the timing on bidding, on bid letting, and the aggressive nature, how you pursue this stuff, so I mean, it's, it all comes back to the savings for the county, so just want to thank you and your staff for the work that you've done here, because it does result in a saving, so appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioner. It's big thanks to the staff for identifying these culvert replacements. A lot of times, we're out replacing culverts in an emergency situation after they failed, and so we conducted a pretty large inspection program two summers ago, and identified these projects for design and replacement before they actually fail. Makes it a lot cheaper that way, too.
My, there's just a comment, too, that the completion date is October 15th, which means you guys are really working, I mean, they're going to be working quickly to complete these, so.
Are there any other questions for DJ? Okay, if not-
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have another roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. That takes us to item 20, Sheriff's Office, give an explanation on a proposal to expand the EMT Deputy Program to increase certifications from 15 to 20. Sheriff Milstead and Joe Bosman.
Morning Commissioners, Lieutenant Bosman's with me, in case you have additional questions, but as you recall, years back, to help address some of the issues, the EMS issues in the county, the, I brought you a recommendation to train deputy sheriffs as EMTs, a certain number of them. We started with a small group, and we've grown now to 15 of our road deputies are emergency medical technicians. That training involves roughly 150 hours of classroom and hands-on training, national certification, biannual refresher training of about 24 hours. It requires additional dedication by the deputy, you know, because they actually get into, deeper into medical care for people that are having a medical emergency. It's really proven to be very beneficial. If you'll recall, in 2017, the Fitch Study discussed the EMT program and the impact that it has had in the county to provide better medical service on the scene of incidents, in particular until the ambulances get there, or also, in addition to assisting the ambulances once they are there. So it's really proven beneficial. Just, just earlier, last month, Dr. Luther, your medical director, was up here and talked again while he was giving his report on the ambulances, talked about the value of the EMT program. EMT deputies make a dollar an hour extra in specialty pay. That is part of our budget, when we budget for our 15 deputies. I'm seeking to move forward to train five additional deputies, so we'll have a total, almost half of, roughly half of our deputies, sheriffs in the patrol area will be EMT deputies if this is authorized. Cost to the county, impact on the budget, I think I can absorb it within the 2019 budget. It'll probably be, the actual cost of the specialty pay will be about $6,500, because we won't have them up, they don't receive the pay until they're certified as EMTs. The training of each deputy is funded traditionally through the Emergency Management Training Fund, and so that training will cover through that fund again. It's about $750 per deputy. And then the ongoing year-to-year expense, if, if, if none of them get a different specialty pay, because it would be reduced if they get a second specialty pay, it would be roughly $10,000 a year. I think the return on investment is incredible, and the value that your medical director and Fitch and Associates explained to the county, I think, tells me, tells you, and I think it tells the citizens that this is money well spent, and again, I think I can absorb it within my 2019 budget. And I would bring that increase of $10,000 roughly to the budget hearing for 2020.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a comment, and I think this is a great idea, when you, the deputies are usually the first person on the scene when something happens, and to be thrown into that situation as a deputy and not feel confident in what you're doing is not smart either, and just to give them the education they need, so that when they do come in on an accident or somebody who's had a heart attack, they know how to respond immediately instead of fumbling through and feeling like they missed something. I think it's good for your deputies, too, personally, not only for the people in the community who are struggling, but a deputy who comes upon an accident or something, and they've got the confidence to know I'm doing the right thing. And so, I fully support it, and I'm sure everybody else will, too, so.
Commissioner Karski?
First of all, I'm extremely grateful to people that want to go into law enforcement in general, it takes, it's not for everybody, and that extra level of being an EMT, I mean, it's something that you really have to want to do, and, you know, do you have that many deputies that are in line that really want to step up for this program? Because it's a commitment, and it takes a special desire to be able to want to do that.
Yep, I've found that about, roughly about half of our deputy sheriffs are willing, at this point, to take that step, and we've already got a good share of them, so this will bring, this pretty much take care of the ones that have an interest in, in providing that, you know, and learning about and getting involved in that level of medical care. But it, you know, we've got good trainers, we've got, we've got an RN that works for us that does, does the refresher training, so they're able to knock that out as they're coming on to shift or going off of shift, so we're able to reduce any overtime expenses with that, but it's, it's really valuable. But you're right, it's not what they all signed up for, and it's not, and, you know, and so, I'm really grateful for the number that have, have stepped up, so if, if this is accepted, that we'll have 20 of our deputies that will be trained as EMTs.
Any further questions? Commissioner Benega?
I would just make the comments that, being familiar with the EMT process and how much time that takes, I do appreciate the fact that they've done this in their free time, so to speak, and I know that that's not always the case, but it's not just about when they're on duty that they're effective with that, it's when they're out in the community, living in the community, and they frankly are on that call list, so to speak, 24/7. So I think it's a great investment in Minnehaha County's Emergency Management Group.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, it's just a briefing?
That's what I thought.
Sorry.
And it is a briefing, but I didn't know if I, if it's okay, I'll move forward with it. I mean, that's my plan, is to move forward with-
I think, I think you heard pretty universal support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, item 21, is the Annual Review of Minnehaha County Facility Power Outage Response Protocol. Craig Dewey.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The County Policies and Procedures Manual requires that a review be conducted of what needs to happen if the power happens to go out of the county. As I recall, last year, I don't believe there was any outage of any significance. However, it is important for all staff to know what the procedures are in the event that that happens, and so that policy has been forwarded to department heads as of December 26th, and the department heads have reviewed that with their staff members. Certainly happy to answer any questions, this is more of an update or review for you, so no motion is required.
Anyone have any questions for Craig? Like you said, it is an important thing, and it's good to, just like you have to change your batteries and your fire alarms at home, it's good every year to go over this and remind yourself of what the plan is, so I appreciate you bringing that forward.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item are liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a couple of comments. This last week, we had the legislative breakfast that was put on by the chamber, I think it was fairly well attended by legislators, and just kind of give us an idea of what they envision going forward this next year. I did step out a little early and traveled to Aberdeen in my capacity as a state JDAI co-chair to visit with Brown County about their progress and where they're at with changing the way they deal with juveniles in the law enforcement side, or juveniles that are in trouble, so. It was a good, it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, oh, Commissioner Benega, sorry.
Just briefly, I'd like to recap, some of us have already seen this list, but I'd also like to thank Mark Trenz with the capital improvement schedule that he provided us. We budgeted last year just over $4.5 million for building fund appropriations, and he brought that budget in with adding additional projects and doing some of those internally at $4,350,000. So, he saved another $220,000 in his budget and enhanced the number of capital improvements that he accomplished, so that's a great accomplishment, and I want to thank everybody for their contributions in that.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to just comment on the Metro Communications, we also met, and we're not picking a permanent new director yet, because there are several irons up in the air on this, where we have potential new location, expanded capabilities, et cetera. So we're working to accomplish that. Michelle Boyd has been assigned to assist Jessica Mul, what's her last name, Mulder? Anyway, and to move the process forward, we decided that bringing someone in, in midstream here during all this tumult, might be too much, and we'll wait a little bit here. We hope to really have a new director very soon, though, and Yargus did report on this, as did Teresa Staley.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, that takes us to old business, is there any old business? New business, I think Carol Mueller's going to introduce the topic for us.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Mueller, Commission Office. One of the things that our offices have gotten calls on, and I know you all have gotten calls on the last couple of weeks, has been property taxes, the number that people need to pay for 2018 payable in 2019. There's been some changes, some challenges that have gone through. Staff has been working very diligently, even over the weekends, in order to do that. Auditor Bob Litz and IT Director Monty Wannenbach are both here today, and can take you through a little bit more of the, of the details through that.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office.
Monty Wannenbach with the County IT Department. I wrote up kind of some notes here and a timeline to give you some of the details and an update regarding the property taxes due in 2019. So on a positive note, there are no significant software or computer issues, rather, a series of small items combined with some bad timing. So, to kind of walk through kind of a chronological order of some key things and dates to be aware of. On November 19th, the County Auditor's Office sent the taxes to the state to be certified. So that process, I've always heard about it, didn't really know what it did, but the state has to certify levies for taxing authorities like school districts that crossed, cross county borders. So they send those to the state to make sure that those levies are the same between different counties. Anyways, that took them a full five weeks, but you throw Thanksgiving in there, so they had probably four and a half business weeks to, to do that. They were not complete with that process until December 21st. So, really right there, that kind of put, you know, the county under the gun, because of how the holidays felt this year. That really kind of left the Auditor's Office with about three business days to complete the rest of the processes that they needed to, to calculate those property taxes and get them ready. And as you know, the county put in a new property tax software in May, so some of those processes are brand new to, to the county, to the Auditor's Office, so they're going through those steps for the very first time, using some high-level directions from the vendor, and support from the vendor as needed. So anyways, like I said, we got that back from the state on December 21st. On, at the end of the day on December 21st, it was identified that some owner occupied statuses were not properly migrated. statuses were not properly migrated. So, when that was identified at the end of the day on the twenty-first, we really couldn't get together as a group and really create a plan and do anything about it until the twenty-sixth, because the twenty-first was a Friday before Christmas. As you know, we had Christmas Eve off on the twenty-fourth, Christmas Day the twenty-fifth, so we had four days that, that passed after that December twenty-first date that, you know, we kind of lost in some aspects. So, on the twenty-sixth, we got together with the Auditor's Office, IT in the Auditor's Office, to come up with a plan. It was deemed that we would work with the state, make sure they could re-certify those taxes, otherwise, we'd have to come back with abatements for all of those. So, anyways, they agreed that they would recertify, so we, we went ahead and updated those six-hundred records. That was completed at about noon on the twenty-seventh, and you can see those timelines getting really close to the end of the year. So, they verified with us that we could go ahead and proceed. And then, as you know, December thirty-first, you may know, the state was closed, so any correspondence with them really didn't happen on December thirty-first. So, just the timing of things was very challenging in that regard. And the Auditor's Office continues to work through the processes that they need to go through in order to calculate and get those taxes ready and available for us to receive in the Treasurer's Office. So, like I said, it's a new process, our Auditor's Office, the folks that work with property taxes are very detail-oriented. If there are two reports that have some things that don't look right or don't balance, they notice that, and they work to try to find answers to those. Sometimes, it's anomaly with an abatement, or who knows what. Sometimes, in some situations, they have had to work with the software vendor to identify the cause of those issues. So, anyways, they're, they're working through that. I guess, moving forward, some recommendations and some, some ideas that we've had with the Auditor's Office is, we really need to get those certifications back from the state sooner than December twenty, anything. We, we would really like those back from the state at the beginning of December, so that the Auditor's Office has time to go through those steps. Next year, they will have been through it once, so that will help. But still, if, if we get them back at the beginning of December, they'll have time to properly go through and do what they need to do. If that means that the county needs to provide that information to them sooner than November nineteenth, if that means we have to give it to them by November first, so they have, if it takes them four weeks, you know, then, then that's maybe something we have to do moving forward. I think the issue with the owner-occupied status, IT owns that issue, that was on us. Had that not happened, I don't know that it would necessarily have changed some of these things, but certainly, that was on the IT Department, and we, we did resolve that. But we're, we're still, at this point, the Auditor's Office is working through the steps that they need to complete to make those taxes ready. With that being said, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Madam Chair, let Bob go first, I guess.
I, I want to assure you, we've been tracking this process out and the things that are happening very closely. We take it very seriously. We realize the gravity of this situation. You know, the people who are affected, and we've got a couple of them that I've talked to, are people that have got real estate deals in the making, and it's, it's delaying them. Also, there are certain people that like to pay advanced tax, then, and that is specifically the way in South Dakota you're supposed to do that, is if you make your payments for ten months, and you make them at the, at the beginning of every month. So, that, that is the true advanced tax payment that we're talking about. We are going to work this weekend, if it makes sense. If we don't have it done by Friday, and if not by Friday, we hope to have it Monday or Tuesday, because I know that's going to be the next session. Now, watch circumstances make a liar out of me, but, you know, I want you to know that we do take this very seriously, and we are working diligently on it. Stand by for questions.
Commissioner Karski.
You know, like most of the people up here, received several calls about, from people, taxpayers, that in the past, I was able to do this, why can't I now? And we heard several different reasons, and I'm really not looking for excuses or to point a finger for blame. I really like, you know, solutions. How do we solve the problem? And you addressed it a little bit, Monty, you know, November nineteenth, I don't know what's magical about that date, how we can begin sooner, or what, how we can get the process initiated sooner, so that we, we're not in this situation, I guess, is what I, when I look back, how can we, how can we do that, or what would need to happen in order for that to work?
I, I would just tell you that documenting what happened this year and looking back into those solutions is, 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 from my point of view, a good idea. I don't, I don't know if getting them there November first, if the state's even going to attack them at this point, or, you know, go forward with them. They've got to do all sixty-six counties. You know, I, it's my opinion, they're probably a little light on staff out there, and I know they've had some turnover out there as well. Not to blame the, you know, I know they've got a huge job to do with sixty-six counties, but, you know, we could, we could certainly try that November first thing and see if everything works next year. It's a goal of ours, so we'll see how we work that out going forward.
One of the phone calls I received was from a state senator, so I let him know, too, that part of the process got slowed down at that level, so, you know, the more we can make people aware of where the wheels need to be greased, I think, makes sense, so let us know.
Commissioner Barth.
Can people pay their property taxes today?
No, there is no number to put in there, but they're also not being penalized.
Right.
So, I would argue that in most cases, there's no harm done. Your taxes are due on May first or April thirtieth, so to that point, there's going to be no interest or penalties on anything. However, we, we, we want to get this done.
Is there a statutory requirement for the Department of Revenue to get this stuff back to us?
None that we're aware of. We thought there was, but we've been advised that there is no, there is no statutory requirement. I always thought that we had to have our first round in by November first, and the state had to be back to us by December first. However, that's never been the, we've never seen that.
Do they have to get it back to us by January first, or is February okay?
Pardon me?
Is February okay for the Department of Revenue to let us know?
Well, I, I, I would certainly hope that it never gets to that point, Commissioner Barth. No, it's not okay for me.
I'm, I'm a little crabby about this, and if there's no statutory requirement in pure, maybe it ought to be on our to-do list when we meet with legislators.
Any other comments or questions? The thing that struck me the most was Monty's comment, that number of small items combining with bad timing, and honestly, that's, isn't that all of our, our lives? You know, that's what messes up all of us, are small things combined with bad timing. And, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that this is going to be a, you know, a one-time situation, but I don't disagree with Commissioner Barth, that we need to visit with legislators and make sure that the Governor's Office, Governors Office and legislators understand this timing concern, and, you know, how it affects a lot of taxpayers, all of who deserve the very best service we can possibly give them. So, I appreciate the hard work that you guys spent over the holidays, you know, trying to get your arms around this issue, and, and I appreciate the commitment of your staff to work through the weekend to try to get this resolved as soon as possible.
I'd also like to mention that I had a, went and introduced myself to the new Director of Equalization, and he is very familiar with our, two of the new systems, parts that we've put in for real estate and taxes. And I think he's, when he gets, gets things in place like he likes them, he's going to be very good to work with in that regard. Not that there's anything wrong with the past, but like I say, we've had these new, two new systems, the Parcel Manager and then the ENCODE system, and he's very familiar with them, so.
Okay, well, thank you both for coming in and helping to explain this issue a little bit, both to us and to those who are, are watching and are viewing audience, so thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring something up also. Today was kind of a special day for me, because it's the last time I'll be sworn in as a county commissioner, and I, I have to congratulate my fellows who were also sworn in today and the other county officials. I've got to say that as a, in a time when our public institutions, our civil institutions are under attack at many levels, there's no question in my mind that we, five commissioners, operate with complete integrity and good faith trying to move the, the county forward. And in my last four years on the job, if I lived that long, I'd like to continue to work to make this county the best damn county in the state, and so, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Craig Dewey.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office, for the last time here this morning. Legislative session is upon us and is starting today. At noon, the Governor will provide the State of the State address. As you are familiar, from time to time during the session, the Commission sends a lobbyist, which is me again this year, to lobby on your behalf as far as the different bill priorities are concerned. As you're aware, legislation can change very quickly. Sometimes, an amendment can be added to a bill that changes it in committee. Therefore, there would only be a necessary requirement of a couple of days before that bill could be considered on a floor, full-floor vote. Typically, you will receive weekly updates regarding the legislature, which those will, briefings will start next week, but in the event that that short scenario arises where quick turnaround is provided, just wanted, again, this year, to talk about that process with you, how you would like to approach it in 2018. The way that the Commission approached that was, if there was not time to get input from the full Commission on the position of a bill, that the Commission Office would coordinate directly with the Chair to discuss whether or not a position should change, up or down, or stay neutral for a specific piece of legislation. No full action is required by the Commission, but I certainly would appreciate your input as to how you would like to proceed for the 2019 session.
Any comments, questions? Commissioner Heiburger.
I'm just, having done it last year, I, I think it worked well. I think most, I don't think there was anyone unhappy with decisions that Craig and I made last year, which would have been last-minute decisions, and I think the process worked well. That would just be my input.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll go with the existing protocol and, and put that into place for this year as well.
All right, thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you. So, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda. I'd entertain a motion to recess, and then we would reconvene in at about ten-thirty.
Let's go to recess.
Second.
Motion in a second, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.